Harry's kinda as purple, too.
Yeah, see? Good.
But I had them in the pocket. You got a pocket?
No.
See, those are called executive shirts.
These are?
When I bought this shirt, when I bought it in our stores. Okay, good.
One on the right.
That's a post. Yeah, exactly.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the special meeting of the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission for Thursday, March 31st. In attendance are regular members Sienna Leskivitz, Galdenzi, Dulac, and alternate member Gunn. Our first order of business is approving the minutes of March 17th, which is in our packets, I believe. Do we? I got a copy.
Oh. You do? Okay. You do?
I did.
I don't.
I don't.
Sorry, you know what was your...
Oh, no, I had the last set.
We'll do alternate at the next meeting, I'll say.
Okay. I wasn't here. So, moving rate along. Old Business P&amp;Z Application 2014-15-6. That is the bulk propane bulk storage. And at our last meeting, I just wanna, I'm gonna probably bring this out of all our meetings going forward. What has been decided is that we are gonna open, when this application, if it ever comes back from the state, from Wetlands approval, or if it gets handed back down to us, and if they approve it, we will be able to open that up for public comment. It is not gonna be a scheduled public hearing, because a scheduled public hearing requires 30-day notice. This would be a site, it's a site plan. We are gonna allow public comments. What we're gonna do, as soon as we know, if it does get handed down and there's a date attached to it, we're gonna get the information out as fast as possible. We'll use social media, we'll use some word of mouth, we'll use social media. We'll announce it at the town council meeting if it falls within that range. And we'll probably have, it will definitely be more than one meeting that this would be on the schedule for, to allow, if somebody missed the first meeting and wanted to comment on it, we would definitely have another one. It's gonna be a little challenging on the scheduling side, because we need, we could find out on a Wednesday, and then we have a meeting on Thursday, so we're gonna have to do some scheduling changes, trying to get a little larger facility. Otherwise, we'd have to have the first meeting here, and maybe, you know, obviously, we have a limited number of seats and capacity, so we'd have to kind of work that out for the first meeting. But we will be able to have more than one meeting if something like that occurs where we have it here, if it does get handed down. Again, we have a finite number of folks that we can allow in here, and people can switch, or whatever it might be, or just wait to a next meeting at a larger facility, because we do, we only have a certain amount of time to act on it once it is, if it's handed down. And if we don't act in a certain amount of time, it would be automatically approved. So that's why we're looking to move pretty quickly on it when we do, if it does come down and approved by the state wetlands.
But just to clarify, we don't have a date, we don't have any information right now.
Yeah, so I just wanna get the word, start getting the word out a little bit, that what our process is gonna be when the time comes. So as many people are informed, and also we're trying to be very transparent.
How many, how many days do we have, once we get?
Thirty-five.
We have thirty-five, and there's no potential for extensions. Thirty-five days. Okay.
So, and one of the things we've said, depending on when it gets handed down, you know, we should have at least two scheduled meetings, and then maybe we can squeeze in a special one if we need to be, but we'll cover that as that occurs. So I just wanted to get that out there on that. New Business Application 2016-2. It's a site plan for 2000 Foxen Road.
So I think I'll just start, if that's okay, just to do a quick kind of summary. In your packets, each of the commissioners have your original application. I didn't include a site plan, because I thought that that was going to change, so I understand you have...
It did, and we just got it today. That's why I'm here to ask to grant for the extension.
Okay, perfect. So, Mr. Helmrich has the revised plan, and I have here dated today, March 31st, a request for granting us an extension of 65 days. Because even though you haven't reviewed this application yet, it was submitted to planning and zoning on February 3rd, so technically, it was received by this board on February 4th, because it's the next regularly scheduled meeting. So 65 days from February 4th brings us to April 9th, and we don't meet again until April 21st. Mr. Helmrich was eager to get this application going. However, he did need a variance from ZVA for the location of the canopy, which was his original plan. Since he did not get that, that's why there are subsequent changes to the design. And I'm waiting for referrals from the various other departments, like the fire marshal, building official, town engineer, zoning enforcement officer. I did receive comments from the police department. They had no issue. From Lieutenant Gary Reepa, March 29th. "I have reviewed the accompanying documents regarding the proposed diesel gas station plan for 2000 Foxen Road. I have discussed and reviewed this project with Chief Cannelli. We concur that if this project were completed in accordance with the documents provided, there would be no objections by this department. Foxen Road currently has several active sites of similar use, and any amount of increased truck traffic, we believe, would be minimal." And also, just for the record, I did receive a letter from an abutter, Mr. Mark Goodmaster, and he had concerns about the facility as is relating to noise, fumes, truck traffic, and just kind of ongoing zoning violations that he's observed over the years as a direct abutter. And he had requested that there, that the board consider opening it up to public comment. In the past, we've accepted comment through letters, so just bringing this to the board's attention.
And that's what he's gonna do. He's gonna provide some comments for our next meeting.
Okay.
And then here also is a letter from Mr. Helmrich, just kind of addressing some of the concerns that his neighbor, Mr. Goodmaster, has.
So what can we do tonight? Because we really don't have the site plans, and we don't work.
I did bring copies to leave with me, but I just got them today.
Okay.
So I was gonna have, grant the zoning officials' extension to review my plans, and then go from there to a later date. Hopefully, the next meeting, we can get in and get this done.
Now seating for our meeting tonight is regular member Holgren.
So do we, do we have to make the motion to extend, right?
To continue. Yep.
Well, let's just do that and get that out of the way first.
I make a motion to extend to the next meeting, Application 2006-...
No, no, no. The extension wasn't prepared.
Oh, sixty-five days, right?
Oh, sixty-five days.
Yeah. I make a motion to extend Application 2016-2 for another sixty-five days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Our next meeting is the 21st.
April 21st.
Then we have a public hearing for...
No, we're just extending this for sixty-five days.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And David will abstain for that one.
One quick thing. I found a deeper hole up there, right?
Oh, okay. I went to the fire department to age it.
Do you...
Disturb anybody.
Do you have any discussion about this? Okay.
Yeah, so, so we just wanted to get that out of, you know, that part out of the way, to give the extension. We have the site plan, but if you, I think it would be good, just maybe give us a general idea of what you have now, and what's your, the intended plan. So you give us a general idea, then we'll get a little more detail at the next meeting.
And you'll be able to look at the plans, so we'll leave a copy of everybody.
So if you wanna come onto the mic, just your name and address, and just kind of...
My name is Tim Helmrich, the applicant for midway service in North Branford here on Route 80. Our original proposed plans were to put the island in for our fuel dispensing system where it was for over forty years. There was a little bit of an issue with the state property line, 'cause back in the 30s, Route 80 used to cut through our property. When my grandfather bought the property, they never moved the property line out to Route 80, so it left me without having enough setback to have my pumps and my canopy where they were for over forty years. I came to the ZVA to request a change. They wouldn't accept it. So I moved the proposed fuel pumps to another location on the property that's farther south of the building. It's within the 50-foot setback. It gives us plenty of room. I do have an auxiliary driveway next door. I do own all the property to the next building. I have checked with the state. The opening is already there. So after much investigation and talking with the people here in the town, we feel that it's, you know, a viable way to do it. It makes it farther away from any neighbors that would have an issue with that. It's over 900 feet away from Mr. Goodmaster's house on West Pond Road Extension, and I feel that it would be, you know, a... It's not exactly where I wanted to put it, but it will work. I have the option to move it into the middle of our driveway at the northern end of the property. I didn't feel that that was nice for the neighbors, to have pumps put in there and have trucks pulling in and out of there. That's a lot closer to the house. I'm trying to be a friendly neighbor. I'm moving it away, so that's where the new plan is.
Diesel, dispensing diesel?
It's diesel only. There's no gasoline, there's no propane, there's no kerosene, there's nothing. It's strictly diesel fuel. And I'm gonna reiterate this again, as I did at the ZVA meeting. It is not a diesel truck stop. There's not trucks that are gonna be pulling in and parking and going for dinner or anywhere else. They're gonna come in, they're gonna get fuel, like they do at the other stations, and drive out. It's just pretty simple.
So currently, what is your business currently that's there?
We have a towing service and a body shop. We were in the, we were at the largest golf station in New England for many, many years. There were two fuel islands. One was close to the building, one was right next to Route 80. I don't know if some of the remembers. Charlie might remember. Years ago, the pumps were out there. You know, and the thing is, I checked with the state, too, and we never abandoned the station. We never changed ownership. We never closed the station at all. Technically, I really didn't really have to be here, but we're trying to do the right thing, and here I am, so.
So the business is not gonna change?
Business is not gonna change. The business is staying exactly the way it is. You know, we've worked really hard. We're doing the landscaping over, we're putting in fences. We get along fine with the land trust. We offer to give them a little more property, keep our fences away from there a little bit. We've done some changes and some cleanup that they asked us to do, which we were planning on anyway, so I, you know... It's, I'm not gonna tell you overnight it's gonna transform into a brand-new building, but we are trying. We have a beautiful stone-faced building. We're putting in, we're trying to put in bushes and fences and make it nice, and make it a little more appealing to the town.
What's your current hours of operation?
Seven in the morning till 5:30 at night.
What type, what type of truck? Like, when you say trucks, like tractor-trailer trucks?
Tractor-trailer trucks, box trucks, fire trucks.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought.
You know, town trucks, stuff like that. You know, and it's not, it has a lot of convenient features for a lot of people. During the winter, the plow guys have nowhere to get fuel. The place across the street from us was never designed for trucks. They have one pump. If you go there in the morning at 7:30, there's ten trucks lined up on Route 80 trying to get any of fuel. So we're trying to make it a little more convenient, trying to make use of our property.
Are you open seven days a week?
No.
Okay.
We're open for towing seven days a week, but we're not on location. We get a call, we go get a truck, we leave, we do a tow, we come back. I did bring copies. I'm gonna leave these with everybody.
Okay, yeah, 'cause then we'll get the prop, we'll have, we'll circulate it through the...
Yeah, I, like I said, it's on tonight, so there's a copy for everyone here. I'll just show you really quick, just so you can get a little better idea. Here's the building. It's been there since mid-'60s, okay?
So let's have, you wanna just take one? We don't want to get it. We don't get another one next time.
Yeah, we don't want any of it, too.
Here.
French, French.
So originally, here's the building, okay? Here's our parking area. This is West Pond Road. Originally, our pumps were here and here, right? This is the Route 80, right? This is the line of Route 80, okay? This is the side of the road. This is the center. This is the side of the road here. This is the edge of the road. This is our existing curb. It's been there from day one. This is the state property line that shows old Route 80 coming through our property, never got moved out here. We had an island, right where it says pavement was our first island, our second island is right here. When I came in to request a change, I just wanted to move and get a setback, and they wouldn't allow it. So I decided to move my pumps over here. I own all this property all the way to here. I have a second driveway here. This is already approved by the state, and it's already open. I'm gonna move my island from here and put it over here. It's not the most feasible way to do it, but I don't have a lot of choice.
Is that where the concrete pad is?
That's where the tank is.
Yep.
Okay, and this would be the proposed island.
Yep.
They told us that we needed 25 feet from the building, per the fire marshal. I made it 30 feet. The tank pad, which has already been approved and already built and permitted, is 15 feet from the building. We took the extra measures to cinder block the windows, get rid of the glass. We've been with Kerry and met with Kerry and Tom, both Toms, which all that stuff was already approved. I made significant changes. They had me drop the power. I took the power off the UI pole. Just cost me $15,000 to bring it underground to the building, so that there was no overhead obstruction.
So, how do trucks come in and out?
Go ahead.
There's one driveway here, one driveway here. These driveways are over 60 feet wide.
On both sides, on both sides of the island?
Correct.
They come in this, this way and pull?
Nope. There's another driveway here. You can see it's existing, bit of this apron right here. This is an opening. They can come in here. They can come in here, or they can come in here. Originally, the island would have been in the middle.
They pull this way, though?
Yep.
Not this, they pull right in?
No. Originally, the island would have been here. It would have worked out a lot nicer, but...
Now, everything, let's call it west of the existing building, so you have this parking lot, and...
This is east of the building.
This is, yeah, this is, everything, everything west of the building is new, everything on right is, is existing, that's existing.
This fence is existing. They asked us to move this line here, which we did, since it shows 50 feet of property. This is the land trust property here. This is the state, this is Mr. Goodman's property here. This is all the...
And you're fenced in this area?
This is getting fenced in from here, all the way down and all the way around.
Okay.
We also own this piece all the way up to here, so this is all the property here. This, you know, there's been considerable changes. You guys go by there all the time. We've been looking for rearranging things and getting rid of stuff. You know, it's hard. I'm in the towing business. I tow in vehicles all the time. I can't just tow your car in, 'cause it's unregistered, and just dispose of it. It's gotta sit there for a certain amount of time, so unfortunately, I get stuck with a lot of cars. I told people in the town, I'll bring them to the ball field, and I'll start leaving them at the high school, but it doesn't work. So I am stuck with trucks and trailers at times, yes. You know, you get a fatal accident, sometimes it takes a year to process these things. I can't just get rid of them. So unfortunately, in my business, I get stuck. That's what this fencing area is for. They asked for our truck parking to be here, and we tried to put everything on there.
This is the fenced-in area, this, right here?
That's the fenced-in impound then, right?
Oh, impound, yep.
That's been there for many years.
Ron, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was looking at the size of the tank, above ground?
Yes, it's double wall, double wall fire guard tank. It's 10,000 gal. And that would sit on this right here, on this concrete pad.
No, it's just, I've never seen it, you know.
It's the new way to go, so you don't have to dig up the tank underground. It's the safest way to go. They're proven.
Why is it safer than being in the ground?
Environmental, environmental tanks.
You get environmental issues. It leaks in the ground. You can't see it. This tank has monitors on the tank, on the plumbing, on all the pumps. Every bit of plumbing is monitored. Comes right to the computer. Within minutes, you'd know if there was a leak. So it's the safest, it's the latest and the greatest.
So the island is only one-site service, then?
One-site service. Originally, it would have been here. It would have been ideal, where it was, there was one here for 40-some-odd years, and there was one here. But I can't put it there, because of this property line, so this gives me the setback that I need.
You have three entrances that you were showing here. Is that gonna be an issue with cars, with some of the trucks coming in from different directions that come in?
I don't think so. You know, it's, I think people are getting a misconception that we're gonna have 150 trucks an hour.
Well, I'm just worried about one's parking filling, and the other one's, you know...
You know what? We're gonna have people there when the place is open. I'm sure somebody can walk out and say, you know what, over here, this truck, that, we're gonna get fuel. I don't see two trucks coming in at different angles at different times. I think it's gonna be a common courtesy. I don't foresee an issue with that.
Is there a, is there a staging area?
There's probably a plenty of driveway from here to here. This is, you know, a couple hundred feet. So the truck had to pull over. This is gravel. Eventually, it will be paved. You know, I could move this fence, and I was thinking about sending a proposal in. I could move this fence. I could clear this out. I could put islands here. The only thing is, it's this much closer to the houses here. If I put islands here, and I'm gonna spend another $250,000, I'm gonna put four islands in, and then we'll have increased truck traffic. You know, then you're gonna have four or five tractor-trailers that wants fueling up. And I thought, if we did it here, you'd have one at a time. If I did it over here, we're gonna have even less. I'm just trying to...
Do you think you're gonna have to blast in order to remove some of that...
There's no rock there.
Okay.
There's no rock. This is already cut out. This has been cut out. This is...
This is a stone.
I don't really need to change much more than that at all.
Do you, so does that plan show regrading?
This is already done. This is already graded.
So it's upgraded?
That's what you saw the last time you were there. That's done. That's graded. That driveway's here. This is long route.
So that dash line, what's that show?
This just shows the bottom of the slope.
Okay.
Where this, I mean, if it was a topographic, it would show the elevations coming up to the hill here, but there's no more hill. It's just a curve right here.
So is that the edge of pavement or edge of gravel?
For now, it's gonna be the edge of the gravel.
Okay.
Oh, so this is gonna be all gravel right inside here?
Yes. It's gravel now.
Yeah, okay.
It's gravel now.
So that won't be paved?
It's gonna be paved eventually, but I need to get all this stuff done. You know, and I wanna, I wanna go to the, to the state and see if I can get this moved. If I can get this moved, we have proof to be paid for it many years ago, so I wanna see if I can get that moved, and if I do, then I'll come back and see if I can put an island in the middle where it belongs. Where it was, like I said, for many years.
Would you think your timeline is for that?
I, I wanted to get this up and going first.
Okay.
You know, I may never do it. If that works out okay the way it is, and everybody's friendly, and everybody's happy, then I'm gonna leave it alone. If it, if it required more than, I'm gonna go in from there. This, this from here to here is just over 100 feet from the mobile station. I don't think there's gonna be any issue with any more noise coming from here or here, okay?
That's true.
And I've had people check. I've been studying it. Carmelon Farms gets a load of gas every single night, or just about every night. They come up, which they're not supposed to, but they come up Seahill Road, they go down West Pond's Extension, they pull into Carmelon Farms. I know, because I tow those tractor-trailers for that company. They're always pointing out, 'cause they can't get in the other way. The trucks are too long. They can't turn on the baby. So I don't think there's gonna be any more noise. I think it's gonna be a lot quieter having it here, this close to the mobile station. We probably won't even be open as long as they are. They're open till 11 o'clock at night. Carmelon Farms is open from 5:00 in the morning until 12, 5:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
All right, so we'll, we'll put this on the agenda again?
I'm gonna leave, give you a copy of everybody. We'll redo this.
Get the copies back. We'll put them all, stuff them in.
Thank you.
Just one more quick question.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. Tim?
Yes.
He has one more question before you leave?
Yes.
I know the pumps in the island were there a long time, and you were talking before zoning, 40 years. Aren't you grandfathered in?
We found that, we've been told that we were, but we were also told that before we started any projects, that we had to come to planning and zoning, fill out applications, and do the right thing. I came in, and that was Kerry in the very beginning, 15, almost 15 months ago when we started. And I brought a preliminary plan, and I showed what I wanted to do. We talked economic development, we talked the wetlands, we talked the zoning, and everybody had mixed answers. So we thought we were doing the right thing, get an application, you know, and honestly, I did check with the state. I have a very prominent law firm that works for us. They checked with it, and they said, you know, you didn't abandon your business. It's been in the same name since day one, and technically, I shouldn't be here. This has been, and nothing against you people, many of you people I know personally, I don't have anything against any one of the boards. I really shouldn't be here. I've spent thousands, I couldn't tell you, $30,000, $40,000 trying to put this together. I'm a half a million dollars into this project, and I didn't need to be. My pumps should be in the middle of the driveway where they were, and been known of them. The state said, look, you didn't abandon it. You didn't go out of business. You didn't change name. My grandfather and my father and I, we still own the same piece of property, just like we did from day, well, from day one. I haven't been here that long.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the, looking at the, your site plan, the place where those pumps are in the middle.
Where they were.
Where they were.
Yeah.
But if they were grandfathered in, were they abandoned? But is, he's still...
We never abandoned them.
He still kept his licensing.
We kept, we kept their licensing. We kept their business. We kept their name. Everything is the same. The only thing we did was, we pulled the old tanks to upgrade to keep with code. You know, that's the law. You have to have certain, you know, you can't leave stuff...
So we got here because this is a change of use, going from an auto body towing business, and we're now making it a diesel station. So a site plan application...
Technically, it's always been a gas station. Well, under a fueling station.
The pumps, but the pumps were removed. So for a site plan, any change of use, if it changes parking requirements, things like that, traffic flow, it comes before planning and zoning. I think the pumps...
That's pretty much...
The pumps were removed.
The, the pumps and the zoning question is more, you know, are you grandfathered in for the location of the pumps? But you weren't going to ZVA for the location of the pumps. You were going to ZVA for the location of the canopy.
No, we had, they told us we had to move the pumps, too. If you look at the property line, the map...
But the canopy, the canopy was 10 feet from the property line.
But the, but the pumps, they said, were 50 feet. They told me that the pumps had to be 50 feet from the property line. If I went from that property line...
Whose day? The zoning board reveals?
ZVA said that that, Tom came to me and said, you have to have a 50-foot setback from the property line to the island for the pumps. If you look at the state road where Route 80 went through, and we all know Route 80 doesn't go through there anymore. That was 1934, way before my time, that we bought the property. My grandfather bought the property. The property line's on Route 80. We would not have the curb, we would not have the islands if the state owned that property. Okay, so if you go from the side of Route 80, and you go from the, if you go from the center of Route 80, the state owns 25 feet in. 25 feet in is right at my curb line. If you go from my curb line to the building, I have 106 feet. I didn't need this. But if you go from the property line, they show from the state, from the 30s, it doesn't show enough room, the pumps or the, of canopy. So either way.
And all I have to go on is the survey that's provided on the property line.
I mean, but you gotta understand our position, too. This has been there forever and ever. You know, nobody had an issue. And, you know, it's really funny, but now the state owns that piece of property? Who wants to reimburse me for all those taxes? I mean, there's probably an acre, acre and a half of land, from day one, from the end.
This board...
We've been taxed for it.
This board has been through this before, as far as dealing with a property, and then also dealing with the town or the state. And the only area that they can approve work in is areas that are occupied by...
I understand.
A private property owner, not the town, not the state.
That never even came up. When we pulled out our original maps, if you look at the original maps, it doesn't even show it. When we had it surveyed, it comes up. I'm not gonna lie to them. I mean, if we paid engineers to come out and survey their property, that's what they came up with. They showed the pins. They showed the old road.
And did you provide to the, I mean, this, it's not this board's role to, you know, fact-check what the ZVA did, but I would think that you would have provided proof and evidence showing where those pumps were located. I wasn't at that meeting, but that, that's one way of just showing that...
We've only been to two meetings. We were at the ZVA meeting, and we're here tonight.
Okay.
The only meetings I've had were informal meetings with you.
Yep.
Tom Cowles, Tom Hogarty.
Yep.
The fire marshal, the fire chief, the police chief, and everybody else that pertained to that kind of stuff.
Okay. Well, I know Tom Hogarty has been stopping by your place every day.
Yes, he's informed me on a lot of stuff, which is great. He told me, you know, what I need to do.
Right.
As far as coming here, you know, and giving you, and asking for an extension or granting an extension for that.
Right.
I wish I could have got the plans a little quicker, but you deal with engineers all the time. You can't just snap your fingers and tell them, oh, go ahead and change this. That's incorrect, so.
Right.
All right, then we'll see you on, in a couple, the 21st.
April 21st. Thank you.
All right, so we'll continue Application 2016-2 to April 19th. All right, next order of business is bond release, 2001-2-4. That's the... Tumblebrook Estates?
Excuse me, one second. I gave you guys seven of those maps. Can I just grab one just for now?
Okay. First is a bond released for, as you said, Tumblebrook Estates. So this is essentially just housekeeping. This goes back to a public road. This is from Kurt Weiss, dated March 24th. It's, he's requesting release of this bond. It was a maintenance bond. Public Road, Tumblebrook Drive, and associated site improvements were accepted by the town in July 2007. A maintenance bond was required to remain in place for one year after acceptance. There are no issues with the completed improvements. It is recommended that the remaining bond for this development be released in its entirety.
Did you say 2007?
I did.
Okay, just checking, one year and 2007.
So these, this is the list of bonds that we still hold?
Oh, so this was never, nobody ever, they never came to ask for a release?
It's expired, essentially, so it's just housekeeping to release it for both of these, but here's a motion.
Okay. I move to release the remaining bond for Tumblebrook Estates subdivision planning and zoning application 2001/02-4. Tumblebrook Drive, R40 Zone, developer Ed Ricchio Jr. Tumblebrook Drive, R forty zone, developer L. Ed. Ricchio, Jr., Edward Development Company, LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fran second, any discussion on that bond release? See you in a, in a favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Are they requesting, or are they just trying to clean up the open bonds?
Cleaning up open bonds.
Has somebody, has somebody come and requested this to be released, or?
No, it actually expired, because it was a one-year maintenance bond for the road, and so it expired, but just in order to clear my sheet and have proper records, we just need to vote to release it.
How do you find out who to send it to?
Good question. Well, I have, I have files that go back, I just don't know if they're still there. The person's-
How much is the bond?
This bond was for ten thousand dollars. Next one-
We'll get any ideas, Ron, it's gotta go to the owner.
Planning and zoning budget just went up by ten grand.
Yeah.
We're not gonna tell the town council.
Let me get some pizza more than these.
Okay. Next, uh, next, new business is, uh, looks like another house cleaning one, uh, bond release, ooh, this is an oldie.
So this is-
Ninety-two, twenty-three, and ninety-two, fifteen Highland Farms?
Yes. So the public roads, Oxbow Lane and Maria Todd Road, this is from Kurt Weiss, dated March twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen. And associated site improvements were accepted by the town in October nineteen ninety-six. A maintenance bond was required to remain in place for one year after acceptance, it is recommended that the bonding, that the remaining bond for this development be released in its entirety.
Carrie's doing some spring cleaning here, huh?
Yes.
Alright, I like this.
Was there any reason why these weren't released earlier, and is there any history item?
Unless somebody, unless they came in and asked for a release.
So it's not automatic?
No.
As far as, I mean, it's automatic now.
They automatically expire, but they're not released, so, you know, you need to take action in order to release them, to send them back.
So even, so if, if like, if, it, it, see, let's say they put, they have a bond and, and it goes, it's up to close to one year, we can extend the bond. We can extend if things aren't completed, or release part of it.
Right.
But it looks like in these cases, they were done, and they never came back for their, you know, to release the bond, and so-
So Kurt's going on now, and Phil trying to close them all, saying, he's signing off on them, right?
Yes, yes.
So that wasn't done in the past for some reason?
Right, these were just-
And how long's it been here?
Anyway, let's, let's not go, alright, ready? I move to release the remaining bond for Highland Farms subdivision planning and zoning application ninety-two dash twenty-three, and ninety-two dash fifteen Oxbow Lane and Maria Todd Road, R forty zone, developer Joseph Connolly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass five to zero.
Who seconded that? Ron.
I think Fran did first, but doesn't matter.
I do, you're gonna have a hard time finding Joe Connolly, because he retired from the dentistry, and I know he was a yachtman, so he could be, you know, floating around the Atlantic somewhere, 'cause I know he used to be up in Cape Cod a lot too, so.
Okay, well, we'll see, we'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
So I do just have one item before you get excited that we're leaving. So under Town Planner's Report, if I may, uh, there's a question that I just would like your interpretation on. So in the zoning regulations, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with, there is a section that is specific to Northford Center.
The design district?
Design district, exactly.
Mm-hmm.
So the question is, in here, it talks about requiring an eight-foot wide walkway around buildings, and that, so I assume that to mean sidewalks in and around a building need to be eight feet wide. When I look at the Northford Store, they have eight-foot wide side, eight-foot wide sidewalks. When I look at what is now Rite Aid, but was approved as Brooks, that's only five feet. And I believe the convenience store, the gas station across the street from, uh, Tony Rosini's Plaza, Rosini's Plaza, also only has five-foot sidewalks. Do any of you remember, or, I'll read, I'll show you the-
Charlie?
Regulation.
Northford Store at least.
Yeah, but, yeah, but I mean, that was, uh, I don't remember sidewalks, I was at least-
Yeah, I know, exactly.
What we did, what we do with design district, when there's something in the design district, we do give it to, uh, I can't remember his name, is it-
Historical.
Scalvo, is it Scalvo?
Oh, Scott Small?
Or Scott, I'm sorry, yes, Scott Small, or somebody would, uh, we would, you know, pass it on to, but I don't remember, I wasn't here for Brooks, or CBS. I wasn't here for Northford Store, but I don't remember the sidewalks. So they must've been, you know, um-
So this is what it says, uh, exterior architectural treatment, walkways and curbing at buildings. Walkways at buildings shall be eight feet wide minimum, clear space with no obstructions except for roof support posts.
Well, the gas station's been there a long time, and there's no parking next to that sidewalk, 'cause you got the pumps there, so it could be eight foot clear, even though the sidewalk's only five.
Yeah, it was eight, it was supposed to be eight foot sidewalk, sidewalk.
But is there a date on that? Do you have any dates on them?
The, the entire section was amended in nineteen seventy-eight. The only other section that has an asterisk next to it- Is under lighting for, in two thousand four.
You have to go back and pull up the, uh, meeting notes for the, for the Brooks, or whatever it's called now.
For, right.
And, it might be a five-foot sidewalk, and then where's that curb, um, does it have those cement curb things two feet out to the back?
Like a bumper?
Yeah.
I don't think it has that.
No, it doesn't.
It just goes right to the sidewalk.
The regulation's pretty clear, it's an, it's an eight-foot walk, sidewalk, or walkway.
What is your, your question, just to ver, to verify that's what it should be, and that's what we intended?
Right, so, so-
No, I just wanted to make sure I understand what you're looking for.
I mean, that's the way I would interpret it.
Oh, interpret, okay, an interpretation.
An interpretation, because, so going forward, and if you had any insight into those other projects, with the exception of Northford Store, 'cause that is eight feet, kind of going forward, how do we treat walkways against buildings? And it doesn't say sidewalk, it says walkway, but if, if there is a sidewalk, so I'm reviewing a project right now, which is how this came up.
Okay, yeah, there you go.
And there's a sidewalk, and I noted on there, needs to be eight feet wide for that regulation. But then everyone was pointing to, well, look at these other areas of Northford, it's only five feet, or, um, when the Dunkin' Donuts went in and Subway, it didn't look like any, um, improvements were made to the facade, so no changes were made to that sidewalk. It was all based around the drive-through, and no walkways were-
Yeah, right.
Added.
Yeah.
So that didn't really fall under-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, when they, when they talked about the subway and stuff, there was-
That's right.
There was talk, we, and we, and I don't remember if we said not to have a compartment, um, 'cause it was gonna be the back parking, I, I can't remember.
You didn't want the cut, the cut through though, right?
Yeah, I don't remember, but there was, there was a full discussion on that.
About?
The walkway around the sub, you know, the subway in the back and the front.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think it was distance.
No, I know.
It wasn't distance talk.
Let's talk history here. Talking to Charlie, going back to, when I moved my house out of the center in Northford, uh, Brooks was in the rear, where the, the drugstore is now, there was a, uh, an old clapboard house, which was disassembled and moved in pieces. I moved my house en masse down the, down the street, and that had to be around seventy, I moved mine in seventy, seventy-two, seventy-three, but Brooks was in fact in, in a rear lot. The drugstore that's there now is on the site that they took apart the house and moved it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's really, you know, it was, it falls within the time of zoning.
Right, and I don't believe the Rite Aid sidewalks are eight feet wide.
That's the question. What is an eight-foot walkway, is the question, right?
Right.
Is it, does the walkway, does an eight-foot walkway have to be fully a sidewalk, or an area to walk in, which could be part sidewalk-
Right, so that's another interpretation.
You have to find it.
Yeah, grassed, grassed, but you could walk.
Right, but it could be, it doesn't have to be a sidewalk, it could be a striped area, but the question is, what is, so is it eight feet? If we're looking at a sidewalk against a building, and it's only five feet, then you're saying that they still have to provide that other three feet-
Three feet or something.
Of some kind of walkway?
I, I, I mean, I'm thinking that if it says eight feet wide, that means eight feet wide of one thing. Not five feet, uh, you know, cement walkway, and then two feet, you know, with a, you drop down six inches and you got, you know, pavement. I mean, I, I would interpret as being, whatever it is, is eight feet continuous, whatever it might be. 'Cause otherwise, then you could just say, I could put a one-foot sidewalk and have seven feet, you know, gravel, you know, and put something in like that. I think, I, that's the way I'm looking at it, it's eight feet, whatever it is, it's eight feet or something, all the way down, it's a sidewalk, eight feet wide.
Why did, you have to go back and, and think about why do they want an eight-foot sidewalk in the middle of the center? You're not, like, you're gonna have thousands of people walking that you need.
Well, no, it's against, it's, it's against buildings.
Right, but why would you need an eight-foot sidewalk?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what that design code was, you know, it said it was the design district, and they wanted an eight-foot walkway, eight feet would-
'Cause at one time, there was this big, big thing, that there was going to be, um, where the bank is, there was gonna be a whole area to go all around, and then, you know, and then the, that's why the parking, the drive-through got changed.
Right.
At the same time, Subway, where Subway is, um, there was talk about them, they were gonna put this island in the front, so that people, so that it would eliminate the people parking in the front, 'cause they were gonna park in the back, and none of that happened. I, I mean, as far as, as the drugstore, I don't remember anything about sidewalks, I mean, they do have, on one side, they have the, the bumpers with the asphalt going all the way up. I don't think they truly have any sidewalks at all, and they certainly not, I don't even think they're five feet, so.
Yeah, they just have the sidewalk going around the building, like, in the front of it and down the side, yeah.
Yeah, but, that's very, it's not eight foot, and I doubt that it's five feet.
But maybe they interpreted it as, you know, if it is five feet, and then Fran said, I know there are bumpers somewhere there, but maybe when you total that, it's eight feet.
So how would you interpret it going forward?
How do I interpret it, or do I think it should be?
Both.
How I interpret it is eight, eight feet of continuous, 'cause that's what it says, with no obstructions except support for roof structure.
Yeah, so it's just-
For me, it's clear what it means.
It says walkways, okay, at buildings shall be eight feet minimum, clear space, with no obstructions except for the roof support. So you have a walkway, at the building shall be eight feet wide minimum, and the only thing, you know, clear space, the only other thing it says, walkways in buildings should not, should not be, use, what's that, big, big human-
Bituminous?
Bituminous.
Too many syllables in there.
If it's more than one, you've got-
Bit, bit concrete, it's called a bit, bit concrete.
On one thirty-nine, that's a design district too, right?
Uh, no, I don't think one thirty-nine is, but I think for, going down, past one thirty-nine is, going down towards the churches, I don't know if one thirty-nine is.
The, the northern part of one thirty, by Central Plaza.
Central.
Yeah, where Central Plaza is.
The city hall, city hall.
Isn't that?
Yeah.
Yes.
A design district.
It is, that, that's North Branford Design District.
This is for North Branford.
Oh, that's-
I'm sorry, this is for Northford, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But, um, oh, and interestingly enough, so for North Branford, walkways at buildings shall be five feet wide minimum, and shall not be bituminous concrete.
Should not be what?
Bituminous concrete.
So what does that mean?
It's the type of material, it's the-
It can't be guy?
Asphalt.
Right.
Asphalt, asphalt, okay. You gotta get cement, okay.
Or some, or it could, anything, anything but asphalt.
How about this, I think we should update the Northford Design District codes to match the North Branford District codes, and be five feet. Are we split the difference and make it?
Six feet. Eight feet's have to cut back, and the five feet's have to add a foot. Do we have to go back into the historical records to see if they got a variance on?
That's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm a, the pharmacy lady, I got a variance.
Uh, I, I believe I looked, and they did not.
I, what? Why, why are we thinking that, since they just built what they wanted to build, and no one caught it?
It's really more, I was asking about the others, just to see if there was reasoning behind it, and I'm more interested in how do, what's the interpretation going forward? Because we have an application before us, and I'm going through this, and I'm saying, based on this, you need eight feet.
And I'm sure, back in the seventies, when these were put into effect, there was high hopes of making this beautiful plaza, but they never followed through on architectural. You know, so-
Right.
It ended up being a strip mall, like everything else. And, um, so my opinion is like, then, five feet is enough.
Well, we can't, no, we can't, no, no, we, we-
Well, I mean, it's future.
Yeah, but as far as interpreting, if, if somebody comes with an application-
Yeah, then it has to stick to what it is right now.
Right, what it's stick to is eight feet-
Eight feet.
Eight feet continuous.
And let them, let them go through a variance, and then look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, it's clear from my interpretation, it's eight feet.
Okay.
I'm telling you, you're not gonna do it any other way.
Right, and then, as an exercise, I mean, it would be easy to just do a text amendment to change that to five, it seems like it would be more worthwhile to look at the entire design district. That requires a lot more work, but-
I would, I, I would like to understand it before we just say five, because, although I understand your point, if we don't, if that is, if that's a desire of ours, we, we might as well start somewhere.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't, if we, if we never, if we get rid of it, we'd never get to where we want it.
And also, I'd like to-
If that's what we want.
Right.
If, if, uh, I, if we wanna get, um, if we wanna even start thinking about that, if you have any interaction with Scott Small, then maybe kind of run it by him, say, Northford, I mean, North Branford's five, or a, you know-
Right.
What is, 'cause a lot of times they review, uh, those design district site plans and different things like that, um, so I'd like to get their input as well.
Okay.
If we do that, and then we can, I think we should have, we should have met one.
We've been on wetlands last night.
We can have that discussion.
So Carrie, um, our favorite person is not here tonight, the old Sunoco Station, Northford Center, they want it turned into a-
Convenience store.
Convenience store. Would that require, if that's in the design district, would that require an eight foot?
Wait, say that again?
He's not, he's not changing, I don't, we talked to him about that, remember?
No.
Dom's, uh, Dom's Sunoco Station becoming a convenience store.
Okay.
Uh, it is.
He's changing the facade, right?
That's, that's, that's the application number.
Yeah, so we, so-
That's where this came up.
Right, so what happens is that site plan, when we have it, and when he shows us the site plan and architectures, we're gonna forward that to Scott Small for his review of it, because as we do with anything in the design district.
Yeah, but as it stands right now, our regulations are, if you're in Northford, it's eight feet, and if you're in North Branford, it's five feet.
Right.
Yeah.
And that, and that's just-
We could look at this going forward.
That's what I wanted to- Get clarification right now.
Yeah, that's what we said.
That's what I just wanted to get clarification from you, because there were inconsistencies with the other approvals in Northford, I just wanted to understand.
Yeah.
And there are no sidewalks over there anyhow.
No, and this just talks about walkways at buildings.
That's what I'm saying, is there are no actual sidewalks, so it would just be a matter of pushing, pushing their bumpers back-
They're pumps, they're pumps.
To comply.
I mean, if he, I mean, I know we should, you know-
This is walkways around buildings, right?
Right.
Not, not in the front of the roadside, it's around the building.
Yeah, but there is around the building there, you got a drive-through there.
With his application, what he's concerned-
This is the gas, this is the body shop, or the garage.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not separate.
It's a separate building.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
So what, what he's, what he's concerned about is-
His pumps.
The distance-
Yeah, his pumps.
Between the pumps and the building, and then the eight-foot sidewalk, and then having parking, 'cause I think his proposal right now calls for two parking spaces heading towards where the, um, garage bays are, but that would all become storefront. And then having enough room for that, and cars to still pull in and get gas.
Well, I mean, if there's-
Well, maybe he has a point, 'cause there isn't that much room there, but on the other hand, if it's eight foot, he has to go for variance.
Yeah, exactly.
It's thick as the, um, on the corner of twenty-two and eighty, to, with the Gulf Mall, right?